I'm going to call the town select board special meeting to order, 7:00 PM on this November 5th. This is an informational meeting, by the way. Chairman of the Select Board, Roger. We have RJ Valley. And why don't we go right down and stand up and introduce yourselves?
Jason Alanty.
Victor Crollier.
Nelson Gromell.
And our building committee?
Frank Lamb.
Andy Haddie.
Dave Thomas.
Will Hutchins.
This is an informational meeting. We are going to let the committee present their findings and then they'll be a chance to ask questions. I do ask that you identify yourself. And if you'd like, I'll bring the microphone out so that the meeting is being recorded tonight so that everybody can hear your question. And hopefully, the response will be given up at the mic as well. Okay? All right, so we'll turn it over to the building committee who would like to start.
Okay. I think, I hope, that you all received...
Yeah, yeah, yeah!
You've got a lot of time, or here. Better than that.
Thank you, Rich. Okay. I hope you have received, in the mail, one of these nifty little flyers. And we put out, I see some people are carrying them around, so I'm assuming they got out there. There is another addition to this flyer, and it's on the table up here behind Steve. And it adds the dimensions of the rooms. People were asking how big the rooms were in this building. And that shows the rooms in the building. It also talks about the exterior, interior finishes. And it talks about the heat and the cooling. So if you don't have a copy of that, we could probably take those and pass them around. Then you should have two copies. One came in the mail and the supplemental copy. Hopefully, that answers a lot of your questions. People kind of asked about the history of this committee. And actually, the history of this committee is, it goes back over 22 years. This committee was started in 1993. And it was started for two purposes. One was to get ahead of the ADA regulations that were coming down the road. And also to start planning for a new facility. Even back then, the facility we were in was getting pretty crowded. So that's how it started. It kind of bounced along for a while. It didn't do a lot of activity. We had a lot of other priorities in the Town Hall at that time. The big one, of course, was the sewer plant. And so the office committee and the office project kind of was put on the shelf. The thing that brought it back together again and got fired up was when the Bartel Lodge, property age, came on the market. And the committee looked into buying that with the direction of the board of selection. We negotiated with Mr. Bartel, and we came up with a price that was reasonable for the property. We went through board of selection, presented our findings, and the board of selection bought the property. And that's where we stand today. We then started to look at buildings. We had Black River architects come in. They looked at the lodge that was there. They looked at our new building. We went back and forth. There were all kinds of votes. And when we got through, the lodge was taken down. And that brought us to where we are now, which was basically a vacant piece of land. And we started to build from that point forward. We interviewed three architectural firms. And the one that got the award was Line Sync Architects out of Wilmington. And I tell you, they have been a very good outfit in business. They understand small towns, and they understand us. And it worked out very, very well. It really did. And they put together the building that you see up here behind Steve. And we are presenting to you tonight. And hopefully, the selectmen will be presenting upon the building down in March. We tried to balance the needs of the Town Hall and the building and the cost of what all this was going to cost. And you know, you can never be perfect about this, but I think we did the very best we could. And I guess as long as we did the very best we could, that's all we can do. We built a building that is expandable. Every agency that has now served in the Town Hall has a space in that building. The downstairs of that building, the half cellar, right now will be used for storage. Eventually, it can be used for expansion. If we expand more offices or more services at the Town Hall. Now, the problem we've had is the fact that we need to be able to look at what we have today and if it what we need, or maybe even the future. You don't know what you're going to need in the future. But we tried to build a building that would accomplish both. Your committee, who you see here tonight, minus a couple of members, wouldn't make it. Worked very hard on making this happen. We took two or three trips up to Wilmington, the architect being down here. We spent a lot of time, a lot of hours, debating back and forth and compromising. We had some real battles. But we compromised and came up with the plan that you see in front of you now. Remember that this is a concept. You know, it doesn't show the plumbing. It doesn't show the electrical outlets. That comes later. So this is where we stand tonight. And I guess, plus the committee, you haven't said that you want to add something to this. Rich, I guess we can turn it back to questions or whatever comments.
Okay, great. If anybody has any questions, I just ask you to come forward, grab the microphone here, identify yourself, and you may ask the board any questions you'd like. Anybody? Can you come on up, please?
Ray Shields. Just have a couple of questions. Is there a cap on the cost of this proposed construction?
A million thirty-five thousand.
That's it?
What is it? What's the answer?
One million thirty-five thousand, correct. That's the cost.
Could you give us a breakdown of the proposed cost of one million thirty-five thousand thirty-six dollars? What does that include?
Yeah, Dave Thomas. We do not have a spreadsheet in our possession tonight. A lot of it is due to the fact that the architectural drawings have not been taken to more detail to give you a better understanding of where the cost go. So I can't, myself, I can't break that down, give you a line item of every one of those costs that has been set here tonight.
I can just follow up on that. If I may please, if we could just follow up. Why would you have that? Why would you have that for the community? The cost breakdown of one million thirty-five thousand thirty-six dollars?
Yeah, we have the proposed estimates. But again, until they do the specifications, they cannot do a more refined detail of that. We do have my items. I could go through them, but certainly, they're public information. People can review them. A lot of them wouldn't make sense to a lot of people. A lot of people would totally understand. And we were not, we really didn't want to present that tonight in a line item to confuse the situation. We're really looking for general questions.
So that would be...
That's a very good question.
That would be available some...
Yes.
Right before the bond?
Yes, it will.
Could I ask you one question, though, that goes along with that? Site preparation and from the drawings and everything we see where Town Highway 54 is connecting with Route 7, what monies are having set aside for that?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand dollars?
Right there.
Yeah. For site prep, it's fifty thousand dollars.
A lot of us continue our, what do we have access to the other?
Just follow up on that. Ask you one more time, and I'll sit down. And I guess, are we able to address this question to the select board? The next part of this question, the site plan was fifty thousand. What I would ask you is, Nelson, on October 6th, V-Trans denied the connection between Highway 54 and Route 7. And my understanding is that the town was appealing that decision. Is that correct? Richard?
I don't believe the select board, we got the appeal from the board, who was the planning board, for the new building. That's who we got the appeal from.
The appeal, we as an office committee originally put it in first as permit before this road. It was denied to the office committee. The proper procedure from that point was for us to appeal it if we wanted to continue, which we did. To go further than that, the office committee could no longer do this. It had to be turned over to governors of the town, which is your select board. They had to do the same exact thing we did, sign for a permit for this, which would, if stolen or true, would be denied, and then we could appeal it. And if it's denied on the appeal, then it will go before a board hearing. And that's the process we're taking. That's the general footsteps of committee. An approval out of a limited access cycle.
I looked into that, if I could, from on transportation. The town has two options in the appeal. They can go to the transportation board, it's an eight-member group, or they can appeal it through the Supreme Court. Either one of those decisions will come down well after a ballot article or a bond book. The other question I have is, I have a letter from V-Trans, a gentleman that you've dealt with. He told me that if the town wins the appeal, whether it be through Superior Court or through the transportation board, the town will have to meet V-Trans safety guidelines. Is that correct?
I would assume so, entering any highway you would have.
Then, when the town is, becomes the developer of the project, if no monies available, the town will hire a site person from V-Trans. The town will be liable for all site surveying. Let's say a drop lane heading south onto TH 54. A left turn lane coming north. The road configuration will all have to be white. We may be looking at a bond issue, which has the development. You have to slow another bond well in excess of maybe four or five times the cost of the proposed Town Hall. Is that correct?
I don't know. I'm not sure where you got your information.
I got it from...
And I'm not sure why you would get the information before we, as the applicant, for this. I have not yet been notified by anybody other than being denied from the original state, which now...
All I can say is, I called up the federal people. I talked to them in length. I talked to the people that you met down here, the local people, the people up in Montpelier. They're consistently telling me that. And I have a letter to prove that. I'll just read one paragraph of this letter. And it's from Craig Keller. You know him well. He's the man that's... Craig Keller, he's the man that's in charge. He's the number-one site guy for V-Trans here in Vermont. This is what he told me. "The Town Hall is an applicant for 19 BSA Section 1111 permit. Would be responsible for all the costs of their project, as it would not be a V-Trans project." I think the community has a right to know that.
But you have, they have not told us what we require to do to put this particular section of highway back into use. We have not been approached by the state. We have got no recommendations, nothing. The last segment was done, and I was with these gentlemen looking at this. We had to do a measurement of what there was for site vision on that road to see if it was acceptable to start with. They measured it, and it is. The only complaint they had when they left was they didn't like the way it lined up with the original Barbara Fountain. It says it was off angle. As we own the property here, that's not discussion that can be settled. And that's what they said to me. And the rest of this stuff is stuff you've got ahead of us. We have not been told this.
Yes, you have. You have a letter dated October 6th from Vermont Transportation.
Again, too, this is just an option. Nothing is written, so...
Yeah. The board itself has voted, because we have assigned this thing for this request. And I think at this point, it's kind of you until we actually find out whether we can do it or not. We can all talk about prices, we can talk about what's going to go on. But I think there's other issues besides just this road we should be talking about with this building tonight. If you wouldn't mind, Ray, I think your points put across on what it is and the cost.
I just think the community, not so much the cost, but I think the community should recognize that this town hall, proposed town hall, and we all agree that we all need a new town hall, will be landlocked. The only access to it will be through Center Street, Town Highway 53. Darker Street, absolutely correct.
There is a driveway.
Driveway cannot...
Hold on. I don't want to get into the access. The access, it is not landlocked. The access is going to be censored. If nowhere else, there is access to the building.
Center Street.
Okay. And what we heard is that it would be the most of the building. So, and that's from the statement that we received when you get the denial. They felt it was a censored street. So I think that's enough with the access. I would say, let's move on to the next pieces. If you have more questions to do with the building itself, you're with Elliot. Thank you, Ray.
Anybody else have any questions they'd like to...
Hi, my name is Wardeez. And I have a question. My family survived a machine. And unfortunately, the records from the assessor and a bunch of other offices were in the basement. And so it was a hundred-year story what just happened in our lifetime. So my question is, what kind of provisions have made fires a question by the record?
You got the safest fire? Sorry? You got a fire from the lake?
Yeah. Certainly, within the structure, there's going to be a complete fireproof safe containment area at the first floor and supporting underneath it will be complete. Totally up to standards for fire safety, water, any other elements.
Climate control, too.
I'm sorry?
Climate control, too.
Absolutely, climate control. It meets all the standards.
And from reference from a town clerk that we had many years ago, which is still with us, this is Gray Colmason. She says that we are one of the few towns that have, in our archives, ancient deeds and records that haven't been destroyed through the years of other towns that have between floods and fires. So we do have a good store of these that do have to be protected and the safest to build in this building to contain such.
That is a very good question, though, because we do need to protect our past.
What about a sprinkler system? Is there a sprinkler system within the building?
I believe the architects have it included, the sprinkler system. I think it's mandated by the state.
It's such a chance, folks. I've got a question.
All clear. I have two questions for you. You're going to increase the amount of floor space. It's going to have to eat air conditioning, refurbishment, do all that. Do you have a projected budget of what the additional heating, air conditioning, electricity, other utility uses are going to do to the budget, including things like insurance? And why no solar electric panels as a project?
Well, we don't. I guess, the architect. That's as far as the architect got of what you have right now. And this committee certainly has not had the expertise to get that information. What was your second question?
Why no solar electric panels?
We've investigated that. And I, we're in the process of talking to companies that will do that for us. And that's about as far as I've done. Don't you have one else?
Basically, one of the things the town is doing currently is talking to two to three different solar companies to actually put solar on various sites of the town hall. And in that process, we will be purchasing power from those groups at a discount rate that basically for the municipality, the wastewater, for the general buildings, for the town garage, and also making it open and available to fire departments, rescue squads, et cetera. What's happening is, is that at this stage, we're negotiating. There've been two offers to come in front of us. There's a third one in contact in a day. I can totally write up whatever the board can look at it. But I think at this point, the board is pretty much made up his mind. It's going to go with something because we have this land. The Superbuck site, we can't put anything else on it. We'll put solar on it, and it'll lease the land, give us electricity more than enough to deal with any electrical increase that would occur in this building because of the discon. The real question that I asked earlier, Frank, which he hasn't had a chance to talk to his committee about, should we not be looking at putting in these heat pumps and blue air conditioning heat throughout the building and not go with anything else because we might get electricity cheaper? And that's something we'll have to discuss with the board.
Actually, the architect already suggested that. That's part of his plan and proposal. Along with a wood chip furnace.
Hello there. My name is Jim Kosis. And I guess, I'm not going to ask questions. I'm going to just kind of put some bullets down. First of all, my one time is to be the project sitting out here. And this is a big decision that's been made in this town. And I know everyone in this room came here for a reason. Otherwise, they wouldn't have come out at 7:00 o'clock. Now, I'm going to challenge each of you to somehow, either tonight, if you can't do it tonight, but sometime, state your opinion. I mean, you can't come to these meetings and just sit here and just say, "I'm going to wait for someone else to come up and say something." You came here for a reason. I'm sure you've got a reason why you came here, and I'm sure you want to say something to this board. It doesn't matter who you are, what, we're all here together. So please, please, ask your question. For the board... This is the time to complain.
Well, then, now to ground out, just make the man sit down.
Now, in my opinion...
Better not ask me to sit down when I get up, Nelson. Better now.
We need a town hall, all right? I'm not sure if...
Yes, because they can take care of it.
We need a town hall. I'm not sure if this is the size of town hall we need for a small town. I've been to many town halls, and if I look at this, I mean, most of, half of this is a basement that is not going to be used, 2,000 square feet. Unfortunately, the land was purchased that is not level, so it is going to have to build on a two-story situation. I wish there was land that we had purchased that was on flat land and could have just used one story, didn't have to worry about an elevator, enclosure for it that we're not going to be able to afford now, that would have to happen later on in the future. These are added costs that we're going to have in the future. The second thing is, there are many towns that don't have a meeting hall like this. They do use libraries, they use fire departments. And so we have another half of this whole structure of 2,000 or 1,800 that is a meeting hall. I think what we need is what the office needs for maintaining the people and using the libraries and using the gymnasium for our meetings. A million dollars, it's a lot of money, okay? It's going to be $22 on $100,000 worth of assessment. There's a petition out there for an ambulance. They want more money to buy a vehicle. The town's going to have adding expenditures for equipment that they're going to need to buy in the road, in the town road, and everything like that. Can we add another $22? Or is there a way in the next budget to find out where we can deduct some money in our general budget to help offset this amount? I mean, I think she's adding more on top of more on top of more. Like I said, this is just bullet points. I don't expect answers tonight. I know this is your first meeting. This is your first presentation. There's a lot of more information that you need to get out to the people to let them know what's happening. So I'm just hoping that after tonight's meeting, the next meeting will be prepared and the people will be ready to ask their questions. Thank you.
I just want to complain. Well, Nelson, Linda E. Cardino, and I'm here to complain. This town is not rich, and it is not a homeless town. And we certainly do not need a town clerk's office besides who are requested. More, there's more pressing things that need to happen in this town. We have a train that goes through South Town Hall. Somebody's going to die. Somebody's going to lose their home. We don't have a substation on the other side for the manpower demanding. Nothing has been done about this train. We've already had a home blow-up in back of my house, which burned my trees that nobody wants to pay for to take down. This is disgusting. And to put a kitchen in a town office? Hello, we just bought an $850 chair that nobody voted on, and now we want a kitchen? It's not a restaurant, people. Next thing, rescue squad. They got their new building. Goodie. When we going to use it? Williamstown and North Adams and Bennington handle all our ambulance calls. So we pay for the rescue squad as well as we pay for Williamstown, North Adams, and Bennington to come and service our people that are ill or need help. That's not fair to us as town people. I have lived in this town for 40 years. I have never seen money spent so foolishly as it is in this town. Sewer, no more than $100 a month. Well, I don't know about anybody else, but my bill's gone up. So hasn't the water. I still have the papers home if you'd like to see them, Nelson. If you can't find them in your filing cabinet. Okay. When you have a meeting, you should have all the facts. Obviously, you don't. There's been questions asked, and nobody has the answers. Obviously, you don't, there's been questions asked and nobody has the answers. By the way, shall we wait till there's seven feet of snow to have a vote, like you did for the sewer? And then be told we can't, you vote on it after I called Mount Pelerion and found out we can? I went to high school, in civics, town meetings and town money was spent by the town people, the people here and the people that didn't show up. It was not voted on by the select board. This town needs a town manager. A town manager that's gonna look out for the better interests of this town. You have hardly any business here to pay for any of this stuff. Nobody's worked at getting companies in Powell, Vermont, to help pay the taxes and override the stuff that's going on. Cam, oh, let's see, I had glass so bad from Snyder's house and the railroad track all the way down to the end of my property, which a month's bought. So thick, this thick, this big a rack. Cam smashed a mirror and never cleaned up their mess.
Can we speak to the issue of...
I am speaking to the issue, we cannot afford this.
Well, that's...
That's the issue.
State your case.
Now, I'm gonna tell you another thing, don't, don't do this. Don't. I don't want a very long time to come up and say what I have been at this town. This town is not gonna be early. We do not need this stuff. Why don't you take a ride down on the trailer park and tell me if you think that's a third world country? Do you think that people down there are courting town clerks up? They can't read that, they can't broil, and they certainly don't vote. Now, most of the people in this room, and I looked around quite a bit, are either 62 or above. There's maybe a few people that are numbered. We're on fixed incomes. I don't care what you're in, Nelson, you're the exception to the rule, and so aren't some of you others. But most of the people in this town cannot afford this town clerk's office. And, there are two buildings in this town that could be certainly revised to take care of the situation of the new town clerk's office. Yes, the town clerk's office is disgusting, just like Altitool or Park. But Rogers Roost is for sale and so is the Legion. The Legion can have an elevator put in it, it has plenty of parking. It's a decent building, it can be roomed off for your needs. Oh, and it also has a kitchen. Mm-hmm. But I think, any voting on anything to do with this town should be done by the people and not the board. And also, I'll tell you this. That amount of money right there, this town cannot afford, because we've gotta have new trucks, so I heard. Now, I think everybody wants an $850 chair that's up in the town clerk's office. Everyone up in the town clerk's office needs an $850 chair that, hopefully, that mayor would have paid for, for that lady. You understand, Nelson, and the committee, that we in this town cannot afford it? There are people on fixed incomes, I am. Social Security did not get a raise this year, because Congress and the Senate and the President and all of them wanted their raise. Okay? And I think I've said just about what everybody in this town is thinking about, that doesn't have enough to get up here and say so. And, by the way, people burning wood? I smoke cigarettes, that's offensive to other people. Well, people burning wood is offensive to me, because I'm allergic to it. But does anybody care? No. There's a lot of things in this town that need to be straightened out. How's your new road up there? Like it? They dug it out and redid it, they didn't do mine. Cost me about $7,000 to fix my yard over there, it doesn't come in.
In defense of the rescue squad, I will say that two weeks ago, I had to use the rescue squad, and it was the Powell Rescue Squad, and they were the finest people that I ever had to deal with and took care of an emergency, so our Powell Rescue Squad, I think, uh...
Must have been a day.
No, it wasn't a middle of the day, it was on the weekend.
Oh, that's right.
So I think the Powell Rescue Squad, that's a great job. Any other questions?
Yeah, I do, I got one. Say about your... No. You, you made a comment about the rescue squad. If anybody sees a building or a road that is Williamstown and is sitting down, anything with a rescue squad that they're not doing?
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Dory Beforene. And you all have done a lot of work on this. I, one of the things, I'm looking here at the large meeting room, I'm just trying to organize spatial challenge, so would this meeting room be enough, is this space for when you have this sort of meeting, with a whole, who, enough folks? Forty feet by forty?
Forty by forty. Forty by forty.
About half of this room?
Half, about 1,600 square feet.
Okay, yeah. I'm just trying to get a picture in my head of what that, that would look like. It would be nice to have a room where you could hear, the issue for me tonight, I think really could hear, I'm sitting back there, and I hear about half of what I said here. I know you have one microphone and you're running around with it, but that would be good. Because I do think when you have an event like this, people need to be able to hear it, and not everybody hears really well. My other just question here, you have room for a town administrator, so is that like a town manager? We gonna get somebody like that?
I think it would have people at the back of the house.
Yeah, because I think that would be a good thing, good thing to have. Okay, I think that's it.
Anybody else that has a scroll?
Well, my name is Jamie Garner, and I've been here many, many years. Many, many years. I don't doubt that we need a new town office. I don't think anybody in this room doubts that. The issue seems to be, how are we going to pay for it? And do we need anything quite as big as this right now? That seems to be my main question. I think it's a question of a lot of people sitting in this room, or getting a little old, most of us that have been here for all these years, trying to figure out what we're gonna do as a town. We lost a little something along the way, because we got into backstabbing, arguing, and fighting instead of trying to solve what our problems are. I like the problem solving. I know there's a lot of people here with me tonight that like that idea better than fighting. My other question is, it's a question I've been asking for 20 years now, 22 years or however long our boards have been working. How are we going to vote on this as a town? We've always voted on what the towns wish to do. And I don't think everybody's comfortable with voting a million dollar bond, or how we're gonna float this, without knowing exactly what it is we're voting for. I know we can't have all the answers, no. I do know that. I don't know if anybody knows what's going on the ballot. Does anybody know? What, do you know? Nobody knows what's going on with ballot. I think we need to know that before we can honestly come to a vote. I don't know how many more questions we're gonna have to have answered. The longer we postpone, the more expensive things get. We all know this, this has happened to all of us. And it's not gonna get better, and our children and their children are gonna be left with a debt to pay. If it's a worthwhile debt, it's not gonna be a problem. I don't have a problem with the store, I think we needed that, I think everybody is paying with a fair share on that, it's working out well. And I'm not saying we don't need a new town office, I just think we need to reconsider how much we're gonna put down upfront and try to pay for, without burdening 30 years' worth of people coming behind us. Thank you.
So anybody else on Mr. Winchester?
Good evening, folks. Jane, I'm glad you brought this up, because really, when there are cards on the table here, there seems to be two sides to the story. One is, can this town office only be in Palm Center? And I think that the only people that can decide that are the peoples out here who vote. Until we find out, and I see the board is pretty much committed, they bought the property and it's there, I've been here meetings, you're great people, and a great job, but we can't seem to move on, we talked about the Legion and the other properties that we have, but if the people of Powell want to have this town office in Palm Center, they need to vote on it, and if they say no, then we can move on to something else. But up until now, we're just standing here talking, racing up here, standing here doing nothing. But the concept, the Legion's has its small problems, but it's a building that could be available. But I do like to say that we do like the idea of what Bennington County Sheriff's did. They took an old car garage, which was abandoned, and hired a new fancy car, thanks. They walked in there and says, "What do you need? Do it for you." They took each person's space personally, and they took an old building and put it back on again.
Hi, I'm Batso, and I just have one question. I'm with Batso, one question. I see in the large meeting room, there's about 90 chairs in the way that this is set up, and it looks like there's about 20 parking spaces, and I just wonder if you've thought about parking or what the parking situation would be with a large turnout then? Thank you.
Yeah, I think you're gonna find that the 90 chairs and the parking, you know, you've gotta remember, this is a concept drawing. Now, the building is the size of the building is, but the parking can be made bigger, which I think is what you're asking for, Ruth, are you gonna, you know, are you gonna have 90 people come in 20 cars? And the answer is no. So the parking will have to be, there'll have to be more parking. And you have parking, of course, up which you are now, also.
You've said a few revisions for this plan already, how much is this going to happen and what's it going to cost us?
What's it gonna cost you, what, to do the revisions?
To do the revisions and the new planning, whatever this turns out to be. Is it gonna be an extra cost to the town?
Anything the architect asked us, what it's gonna cost, yes.
I know.
There's provisions in your parking already, okay? Before you can finalize, what, before you can finalize what your actual parking is going to be, it's a building, it's a foundation, you know where the driveway is going to be, whether there is an exit out on Route 7, or if that is discontinued and we're using Center Street on, then there'll be an option of that extra chunk of property up there that's already there for parking. There will also be where the inn parking was, depending on, the building will set somewhere equivalent to where the old building was. So there was adequate parking there for that and probably got. I think one of the original drawings we had with parking was like 30 cars. That's not counting some of the other spaces on Center Street itself. So these, to put an exact on this is a little difficult till we really know what we're using for entrances, exits, etc.
Will it be inside?
Well, if we depend on what happens with the state, and we should probably have an answer for them before we have an answer for the building. You know, we will, I'm assuming we'll correspond these things, but I'm sure the state's gonna let us know one way or the other whether we're gonna do this, and then we'll go back and work for what we got.
How many of the meetings will the meeting is more disvolted?
That would be hard to tell, as many as, I would assume as many as we need.
The public is certainly welcome to participate in our meetings, warn, when we have them to come and give us inputs. We have had a handful of people show up at any one of these meetings that we've been doing for quite a while, and we're open, I'm open to anybody coming to give us an input that'll help us better this. But we're trying to, with parking spaces and other things on here, this is conceptual drawing, we're trying to keep the cost down. We didn't want to put in 50 parking spaces, then have people come back and say, "Why can't we have a smaller parking space?" We're trying to be realistic, and we're, all of us are out here to protect the town. We're not doing this for any other reason, other than to better the town.
Hi, my name is Rose Trecha, and due to the parking, is that gonna be including the tennis court area also for parking? Behind the building, we work our down so long.
It's not designed as that yet, or?
Okay, so what are you expecting of parking for the little bit that we have across from my house, that you're gonna be able to have for people to park? I mean, especially when it comes to a meeting, you know, you can't predict how many is gonna come in front of the parking. And to have them park in front of our homes?
Oh, absolutely.
You know, this is a concern, and also I'd like to reference to you, Rich, that you had brought up about speed bumps on Center Street. Would you like a speed bump in front of your house?
Well...
Going ba-boom, 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 you know, on these cars?
I wasn't talking about right in the house, I was talking toward the town hall. And it was just, again, you know, a lot of times on the select board, there is five of us here, and they're just suggestions, you know, nothing is, nothing is...
But I had to ask.
Absolutely, and I really appreciate that, and, you know, I don't live on Center Street anymore, you know, I have speed bumps that live on a dirt road up Houston. I have all kinds of speed bumps.
I don't know where the snow is.
I don't.
Things like that, you have to, you know...
Right, I appreciate that, Rose. Charlie?
I don't need that. All I wanna know is, how much have you paid so far to the architects?
$12,000.
How much? $12,000?
$12,000.
And is it true that they will not give you any more information? Do you give them more money?
That is correct.
Mr. Shill?
Just have a couple of quick questions, and I'm sure Nelson will let her talk.
Maybe.
The bartell is low, am I correct in assuming that's three or four acres? Is that about one? Okay. Why would not the lower portion of the property that is better suited for a building that's relatively flat, not have been better for construction than the ridge? And, can you give us, all of us here, some local examples of a new building construction where a significant future expansion was included in the original construction underground? I cannot find that. Most, the rescue squad, the hospital complex down there, Jimmy Winchester, if he was to expand, I don't think he'd do underground. I mean, most people wouldn't expand it, they have a three or four acres, they would expand, I'm probably. Why? A little bit.
I'm gonna say something a little more personal, and I think a lot of people in this room are gonna hopefully understand it. There's a committee that's been working on this for years, there's a new committee that started. started, and we were lucky to get a follow-up that really went in a good direction. We ended up with a good architect, we went down and looked at the land. We had a vision on this land, we had a vision on this building, the architect picked up that same vision. I care about this town, I've been here my whole life, I love this town. There's a beauty in this town that is, you live here, there's a reason for it, to utilize the best piece of property, the best way we could get the advantage out of it for the good of the town. This is a beautiful piece of property, the layout where this building is designed to go leaves it with a view, it leaves it with a view coming from the mouth for people coming into the town to see. These are benefits that, yes, you're going to pay for it, but you're getting that extra bang for the buck. You're showing how to the people coming in. Somebody buying a piece of property, going to the office, walking in, they say, "Oh my God, look at this building." Then they look out the window, and they see the view of the valley and the mountains. That's how, that's us, that's where we've been, that's where we've come from. This is getting your display. You have this building that would sit there as a showcase. Now, fortunately, with the cost of things, it's very expensive. Uh, when we talked to architects, one of the first things, I was one of them that said it, and they thought I was crazy, one of the architects, I said, "We can't go over a million dollars on this." And they said, "You're crazy, can't build a building for that." I thought, "God, you ought to be able to afford this." We've been quite a while working on this, and we did, did a million dollars. There's what, car costs were a hundred thousand dollars, I don't know how hard car costs was. It's a hundred thousand dollars. I said, "There you go, we're at eight hundred and something." So we're under that limit. The bottom line is, we probably could build it cheaper in a different location. How much cheaper? I don't know. I don't need to be involved. You have a park area, you have a beautiful place for a building, you have a good bang for your buck out of what we've designed, the architect's design, you've got passive solar, so there's some light that'll help this building, it'll be a bright building, it'll be something you can be proud of. Can we afford it? That's up to you people to decide.
No, we can't. Is this just for the view?
No, of course not. This is what I said, we're putting it, that's perfectly honest.
My name is Bruce Markell, I live here, very close to forty-five years. If a million dollar bill is being charged, it has to be an interest that we, is that right?
Question was, how much is interest going to cost us on a million dollars?
Four hundred and thirty-three thousand.
Yeah, actually, it's four hundred and thirty-three thousand. On top of eighty dollars.
It's what, a three percent? Three percent, some three percent right now. Three percent interest.
Peter Allen.
Rich, should I speak and answer my question? Yes, you can.
My name is Harold Farming, I live in Village South, a lot of people probably know where this is, just south of here. I got a certain question to ask, Frank, Steve, you got a backup plan?
Well, we can keep dumping money into the building, we're, we've outgrown, that's been quite a bit of money, and it's now adequate to do what we need done with the town office.
My name is Penny Grealish. I guess I'm perplexed because I'm not sure when this decision was made, was it come to a vote that we needed this town hall? Was there a vote, Wilson?
No. Here's, the meeting tonight is to gather information...
Yes, I know that.
So they can prepare for a vote.
So what is going to be on the ballot in March? Do you want a town hall, or don't you want a town hall?
We don't know yet what's going to be on in March, or if there will even be anything in March. Now, we just had a suggestion that somebody wants us to have a ballot article to vote whether it should be in the senate. We're gathering information just like everybody else is. We're trying to find out where and what needs to be put up for a vote, and we need to hear from you people just like they want to hear.
I think the best way to do it is to vote. I think that the town needs to have those things put on a ballot so that when we come to vote, do you want it, where do you want it? Do you want to use an existing building? It's, they're simple questions, and I think that's basically what we're all looking.
Just a few words to Steve, talking about the view. That view down in the valley, my wife and I own six hundred acres down there, and we have worked there, I've worked there all my life, and we've worked to keep that place looking nice. When are we going to have somebody take up a collection to pay us instead of you guys putting it right to us again?
I feel bad that you feel that we're putting it to you, because if I'm not mistaken, we're taxpayers and townspeople too. I haven't been here as long as you have, Charlie, but I guarantee you, I care about this town. I wouldn't have wasted my time the last few years.
Out of the way, but where'd you say?
Well, that's perfectly fine, that's up to you.
Okay. In response to this lady and Mr. Winchester, I think you people have spent enough money on this, and not, and people haven't even voted on lying the property into our law. But as long as you're spending money, why don't you spend money on a backup plan for one of those buildings? To have someone look at it and see what needs to be done to it, and the cost of it, and so on and so forth, because I believe in reusing what we have, and I think everyone else does too. And now it costs a million and a half dollars, because that's what it'll end up being, because when you get done saying it's going to cost us twenty-six dollars, or whatever you say it is, the bottom of the year, they're going to add five dollars to it, then they're going to add five more, and if I live to be eighty, I don't want to hate it!
I bet the answer that...
Anybody that we haven't heard from?
Rich, can I answer that?
I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Donna, and I've been in this town basically my whole life, although I did interrupt you for a while. This is a volunteer committee. We volunteered to do this because we love Palm Springs. We also wanted to do the best thing for the town, and we think the town really needs a new office. Now, the longer we wait to decide what to do, the more costs. The longer we wait to do things, the more cost, period, no matter what you do. So there comes a time when we have to make a decision and do things.
Put more options out.
Okay, we've already checked these options, however.
We don't know how to do that.
We have done a report, the committee checked the Legion out, we did a report for the committee. Now, granted, we aren't professionals, but I can assure you that just as was found out with Bartell Lodge, when you redo an old building, you're talking about costs. Costs just add up, and add up, and add up, and add up, and what do you have when you're done? You have roving floors, you have no solar, you have no, uh, economy at all, you have inadequate space for the people working there, you have a hole that you're going to keep putting money into.
Why don't you buy my house? Because I don't want to pay the taxes in this town.
A new building would allow for a lot of energy efficiency, and less maintenance, less upkeep, and you have to remember, you're paying for an old building right now. You're paying the cost involved in that building, and there is a good chance that this new building, even though it's...
Way too big.
Won't cost anymore to maintain.
You want to pay my share, because I really can't afford it, and I don't give a lot of time to do that. We're still paying for the sewer and the water.
I pay for sewer, and I'm not even on the sewer. Don't talk to me about sewer.
Well, I have two, because I have...
All right, let's, we're focused here, okay?
Where's Mr. Lamb from?
I'm just curious, have you guys investigated the Roost? Has that been, what are the options? Because that's a commercial building. More than enough offices is what you have in the plan.
I believe that just came on the market.
Built by a local contractor, John Chapman, he lives in the community, he'd probably give us a deal on it.
From what I've heard up here, it just came on the market, so, uh, that would be viable, and I'm sure we would love to explore.
Give us some choice.
Good evening, my name is Matt Carter, I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask. We have a town approximately a third the size of Bennington. They have an adequate town office, which is integrated, to say the least, but when they needed a meeting room, they did not go and put in a new town hall with a new town office and, and we, uh, I adamantly disagree with having any wasted space, another wasted space in town. Have you guys investigated whether or not a new town office without a, a meeting room in it?
No, that's exactly why we're here tonight, because we need input. We have not had a lot of public input at our meetings, and we certainly could review this, and I doubt that it would take much to, because these are conceptual drawings, and architectural drawings done, and we could in fact approach the architectural firm, again, at a cost, and we're trying to keep that down, for them to give us an example of that building without the meeting room. But again, we need the input, that's why we're here, we're trying to collect information. We've not been able to get a lot of information, and we've been relying on each other, and Nelson wants to speak up? It should be noted that we do hold meetings in there, now, we don't have forty people there, but we do need a meeting room in this place for the select, for the selectmen, the planning board, the PRB, and the senate.
I remember Tom Leander.
So I wouldn't sit, well, if you have Tom Leander, you need a room with an office, where he can meet with people too.
And another salary. We don't need another salary.
So, so what I'm saying is, I hope what you're saying is that we don't need a large meeting room like there is...
Yes. Yes, I was just, I was just wondering if, you know, the, the small meeting room would be adequate without the large meeting room where we could utilize the school, um, and on that topic, this school is probably approaching over fifty years old, and that's something else we need to plan for. Myself, my daughter, other kids that are coming along in this town, this school is one huge white elephant. When this baby goes in the hole, we're all in debt, but that's way down the road. Again, big one. Um, the other thing, um, the, um, single, the single-story building, rather, so we can eliminate a lift, had that viability been investigated at all?
Yes, it had, and it was just because of the lay of the land that it designed to, to fit into the lay of the land, and the accessibility from the streets is already there, and didn't look into the tennis court, or there was other reasons, but, you know...
You...
All right. To finish that, with your foundation, this building was designed originally on a slab. There's a certain amount of footing and cement work involved putting up slab expense. There was very little more expense to go the additional basement because of the lay of the land, otherwise there was a lot less per se to put a full basement under half of that building than it would be just through the slab, and actually only cost a little bit more, and you had this extra room that, yes, we don't need today, but with a little bit of money that it costs to do it while you were doing this, now is the time to do it for your projected future, for storage, whatever else you may need in the future. It added to the building for very little money. Your re-room size, there's a lot that goes on with the town internally, with people coming into meetings. To eliminate that building immediately, the forty by forty, you would probably put what, a twenty-foot building, take twenty foot off to have a meeting room. I think what you would find when you get done cutting twenty feet out of that, the savings would be so misused that it wouldn't be worthwhile, where it was something that you would have with a slab of building. This meeting hall, it's designed in here, as if you watched any of the meetings, the select board has a meeting, and there's an executive session comes up, everybody gets up, they wander out somewhere, gets pushed into a corner or something, and the select board goes out. This has a room within the meeting room that the select board would get up to go to that public space seat. There are hidden conveniences at work for the people, and the convenience of the town also. So for dollar for dollar, yes, you're going to save a few thousand dollars, you may save twenty or thirty thousand dollars, but in the scale of the difference between seven hundred thousand dollars, maybe hundred thousand dollars, does it matter over a twenty-year period? I mean, it's a lot of money, but broke down over that period for what you're going to get out of it for the future isn't that important.
Now, as far as the associated costs for the newer, larger building, I have to respectfully disagree. The more light fixtures, the more heating, I don't, I don't foresee a savings as far as that goes. I think that's a mute point, even though you can tell energy efficiency, we've all bought those LA, those fluorescent light bulbs, and I've never really seen a lot of savings within that, but it seems to be kind of a... But that's a, a mute point as far as I'm concerned. The heating system being touted back and forth, wouldn't it be just as easy to put in a conventional system with less maintenance associated with it per se, rather than a pellet boiler, or chip furnace, or something along those lines?
I can't speak to that directly, but the architect, we rely on his expertise for heating systems, and this is one that he felt was adequate for the building and would fall behind with the energy efficiency. Of course, cost of fuel, it's non-controlled cost, it's a commodity, you know, we can't control the cost of fuel, so we don't know where any of this is going from. Getting back to the cost, though, I don't know if people here are familiar with the Sumnerland's new town office? They've been working on a committee for twenty years as well, actually, nineteen ninety-two they started, and they could have built their new town office for two hundred thousand dollars when they started the committee, and it cost them, once they finished it, on a slab in a field, six hundred, over six hundred thousand dollars, and they just completed it, because they postponed, postponed.
That's not nearly over a million dollars either.
This is a, this is a metal building like a Morton Building?
No, no, it's not, it's a wood structure, if you drive by it, it's on the Sumnerland Road, it's colonial style, single-story.
They just put in water in the sewer that the people have to...
They had to put in the sewers, they had to put in water?
Yeah, they pay what we're paying?
I, I don't know here, I can't speak to their cost on their taxes, I didn't, I didn't look into that, I just know...
I don't understand why this town has to buy everything now. Let's, why don't we look at Roger's Roost?
That could be a vital option.
And let the people know what it costs.
But that's part of the meeting, and that's, that's the information that you're gathering, and...
Right, we're taking information.
I just want to thank each and every one of you for your, your service. Thank you very much.
No, we, we appreciate that, but we have, we have to look at the other structures that people are throwing up at us, throwing at us. Every time we do a feasibility study on one of these structures, it costs us money.
Well, you might expect a couple of this without asking us.
I didn't do any, I didn't do any, but I'm not on the select board, I'm on the volunteer committee. But they did a feasibility study, they did a feasibility, feasibility study, and it cost us, on the Bartell Lodge, and I believe that was around, that was over a million dollars, was it, not Wilson's? The, the feasibility study, what did that cost us? Fifty thousand? I don't know, the study itself also doesn't have much, probably around twelve, three thousand dollars. Right, but all the other... But to add that to the building that they were building, you were looking at close to four or five hundred thousand dollars in the total cost of that building, which was around a million and a half. Right, a million and a half. So we're just, we've done our due diligence to try to get this together, and again, this is an information session, we're just going to take this information, and we're going to analyze it, and try to figure out where we need to go.
The big building, the big room, when we discussed the big room, we wanted a room big enough, yes, so that we could have the selectmen's meeting in it and have people, have enough room so that they could actually come in and sit down and not beat each other's laps, and have a crowd of eighty, ninety people, if that was going to happen, but the big thing that that room was meant for is voting. You vote at the firehouse now, and we said, you know, we don't own the firehouse.
Oh, no, the town does.
The town does.
You don't own the firehouse?
We paid for that firehouse.
We've already lost one firehouse in this town to...
Or if Adam chooses a school.
Those are, if you want a building, then it is a deed to that building that will return back to the town if and when it ceases to be.
Once there's not a fire.
Exactly. So inherently, the town does own that.
But if you decide, or your insurance company decides, they don't want to insure having the town go and vote there, it could be a problem. What we decided to do while we were building this building, projecting out into the future was, let's make a spot big enough, so that if it came to that point, or if we wanted to use it, we could use it for town-wide voting. So that's the other reason for the size of that room. And you also notice that there's some offices in one.
Add it on later.
Would that be an option, add on later?
No, those offices, they're part of the building.
Do they run sizes yet? Do they add these on later, later, or do you need to do them?
No, I wouldn't do that, you're going to make Nelson very upset.
Oh, why don't you bet?
Susan, have you heard of the Hertford Room yet? I want to remind everybody, Nelson no longer chairs the select board, but he gets laid for everything. Sue Karman, I've lived in this town, I've owned it sixty-four years. I love this town too, just as much as anybody else. I want to thank the committee for doing the work. I know it's not paid, it's not a fun job, it's not an easy job, and I know you've all worked hard on it. I don't think we can afford a town office of this size. I think what you need to do is go back, come back to us with some other options. And I think if we're going to vote on this, we need to have all the facts, we need to know about the parking, we need to know what it's going to cost to heat the building, we need to know the parking, we need to know all this information before we can vote on it. So I think we need to have...
Hi, I have a really loud voice, so I think you can hear me. I'm Rebecca Dragon, and I'm on three forty-six. We've been here about five years, not as long as all the rest of you. We love town, we first started here, we dedicated to being here. A lot of you guys know we've been to planning board meetings, been to select board meetings, and thank you all for your service. What I look at is, it looks so big and huge for what I've learned about this wonderful little town. And I think about other things that this town might need in the future, and you were talking about things to be really proud of. There's, I've heard through the town grapevine, that there is a piece of property dedicated to the town that's for the purpose of a park. And there's nowhere for children and families to go and have their picnics and their barbecues, children to go, like a springboard park or play in the summer. There's no central location for this kind of place. I probably be proud of our relationships and the families that we have care of this town than perhaps the building. Now, we've been many hours in that little town office, and I totally agree that there needs to be new space for that. It is teeny tiny, it is, I get it, but I'm wondering if there is some way to go back to the table and rethink about this, so that we save some of this money, we can put our tax dollars into this. What about a park for the kids? What about these other things? Or come down to the school, is it a school, is it a older building? So that's just my own personal opinion, and I don't, beyond that, if I fall into way longer than me, so I'll sit down, nice to each other.
To answer the park question, I'm going to have probably five or six years, maybe seven. Where the tennis courts are, it never got officially man-stated, or no signs put out or anything like that, but that is called Center Park. And it's your park. There are picnic tables down there, there's a swing down there, in fact, there's several swings. There's horseshoes down there, everybody is welcome to use it, it's your park, it's the town. Those who can go, they're having picnics, do whatever you would like.
Nobody knew about it.
Well, that's where we held the town picnics for a few years. Is there anybody that hasn't been heard from yet?
I'm Andy Quayz. I built my house in seventy-six for eighteen thousand dollars. Well, I saved money on the siding, I'm passionate about today, and I saved money on the windows, and we got them replaced a few years ago. And I saved money on having a garage, which I could have built, well, for low money. It would cost me today as much as that house cost me. And I'm familiar with the library. We added on the library, forty thousand dollars worth, that we raised in Palmsville, I'd like to add. And more recently, we added on a room that is a whole lot bigger than the forty thousand dollar room, and it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which was a donation. Well, anyway, what I have to say is, if you need to do it, do it now. It'll cost a hell of a lot more later.
But not so...
Okay, folks, we've been going here now for an hour and fifteen minutes, and I think there's been a lot of repeated comments, et cetera. Who can we open here? Oh, sorry, Jim.
My name is Jane Taylor, and I just have one question. Back in the seventies, when the school was added on, they sold us this addition on the school, partly because we were going to have this big room that we could have meetings Now, they're saying we need another meeting room to have meetings in and to vote in. Will that be the time I'm on this building? You said you didn't want to have a voting in the firehouse.
Is the select board comfortable?
Other towns, both the schools, the firehouses, the rescue squad buildings, and one now. And believe me, North남's, it's all the right, it really likes its men, just like
Thank you, I appreciate this a third time, but I, Steve, I'd like to address this, and I don't want to make it personal, but I understand what you said or commented to me, that the view is very important to you. The view also cost a great deal of money. And I guess you didn't answer my question, why, did we look at the lower level of the Bartel Lodge? The flat area down by the tennis court? And, this is the no-brainer of this whole thing, looking at the sketches of the building and everything. We're going to have an old town hall. What are we going to do with that? We're going to, if we build this building, we're going to have an old town hall. Isn't that expansion enough, fourteen hundred and eighty-eight square feet? An old town hall will fit in the basement.
If you listen, and I'm sure you've heard the meetings before, and it was my own personal thought, it's up to the people to decide what to do with it, with the old town office. We have a historical society. That's a historical building. That would be a decent-sized building for them, it would be the right size for them in the historic district. I mean, that's my own personal thought. What happens with it, I don't know. But obviously, it doesn't meet the town hall. And as far as the view, you missed the point. I didn't say we had to build a building there because of the view. The view is the bonus. The view is the bonus when you put something there. Location has a lot to do with the value of a piece of property. The value we get out of this is townspeople living in this town that has that beauty that's ours. We happen to have it, if we put a building there, that's our bonus, we get that extra.
Isn't it time, though? I mean, we have Northbound, we have Palmsville, we have Palmsville Center, we have many lighted areas in our community. Upper Center Street, I would caution to say, is not the best place in town. Shouldn't we not be looking at a town hall that satisfies the needs of our community, yet brings everybody, gives everybody a chance to get together in a centralized location?
How much more centered could you be? That is the center of town. Geographically, two foot off the corner of the current building, dead center of town.
The final question I have, and I thank everybody for that.
Hold the mic.
Patience, is what caused the Legion to be discharged? Can you give us some specifics on that?
They spent their money.
I'm not sure what we were getting with the Legion. Nobody's honestly told me exactly what we were getting.
We did have meetings with the Legion, we asked for a solid proposal as a select board, something in writing, something tangible that we could look at, and to my knowledge, we never got that, did we? But to my knowledge, we never got that in writing, exactly what it would be, we had a lot of ideas. Yes, sir.
I know you people around the building, and you decided, before we had anything else, it wasn't worth your time, so they dropped. Now we're going to wait and see where this vote goes, and the Legion may be still available.
We didn't have to sign it. We asked the question on what was available, and did the Legion want to keep a particular piece of that particular building? And the consensus is, we got this for, correct me if I'm wrong, you people did want to keep a section of that particular building.
We talked about keeping the upstairs for one year.
I don't remember a year, but it doesn't matter. And then you go back through the building, somebody sets up about underground, well, then most of your office would be underground. Jim?
This has gone too far. Until the people vote here and decide where this can go, the Legion's hands are tied, anybody else's hands are tied. If we walk into vote on this and decide we want it in Palmsville Center, it'll be in Palmsville Center. And if we don't, then we'll come back and talk again. Let's help and nobody, I know it costs a lot, but there are options. Well, it is for the school. We can't do that. Listen, when I met with the Legion, with the selectmen, representing fifty dollars from Legion, it was to have a conversation. I said, we need the conversation, because if we're shooting down, is it going to be like the school again? And we gave you a backup spot. Give us a look at the Legion, okay? We did not say, we looked for a room to be in downstairs and storage here, to be discussed later, though. Hey, the devil's always in the details. There's so many things to talk about, but we need to find out exactly what you people voted in this town really want of this place, and put it on the ballot, and march. And maybe, a little few people here, you might want to put a non-ending revolution on the ballot and march, asking if you do want another form of government. Whereas there seems to be a lot of conversation about, you know, maybe another part-time town manager that serves two or three towns, or somebody's retired somewhere. It's something we need, we don't talk to each other much. And the manager doesn't really do a good job for us anymore. We don't have a man who coordinates our meetings. So I find people in the town here just don't know a lot what's going on. I typically go to a lot of meetings, on the planning board, I bed at meetings, I congratulate. They're hardworking, good people. And the select board did go out and ask for proposals to check the Legion out. The lowest one was fourteen thousand, the highest one was twenty-two thousand. We sit back there, we don't spend money on that, let's move forward the way we moved tonight. We're moving forward. First time we came together in a long, long time, I think since biomass, this town is really better. We came together during the biomass. Whether you're on one side, you're on the other, and obviously, that's the same thing I did, it's going to be on both sides, but jeez, unless you're not in the night, we all live here, we all love it, and let's not be our own worst enemies. Be frank. So, but the Legion did not. All we wanted to do was negotiate a meeting room. Williams Town closed their volume, they moved to a little location, they have a good time, the volumes don't make money anymore, liquor life, bill is expensive, it's just a losing game. So, and veterans are not joining trouble anymore, they don't need to, they need to stay home with their families. The Legion's in trouble because of older people that are here, our average age is about seventy-nine.
We need more than one item on the vote, we need. Yes, we need a new county town clerk's office, but we need to decide whether we want a new one or refurbish another one. Not just, look, we need a new one, yes or no? That's not going to work. We need the third choice on the vote.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, you want to say something, Nelson?
Yeah, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, I'm going to make a few statements on what I heard tonight. One was concern on the size of the building, one was on the location of the building, and basically, what type of offices or rooms we have within that building. And that's for the town hall itself, and that's what we're here to be talking about.
Nelson?
And is that, we all need a brand new one?
I think you better add one more. And I think I heard people out here really talking about the cost of the building. Is that correct?
Yeah, I figured it had more...
More real issues, am I correct?
Size.
Cost.
Cost was the other issue.
How is the cost and other options?
When you're talking cost, not only the cost of the building, but taking the granted all these fields, the driveway and everything, give us a total cost.
That's the other thing, actually, you want way more details than you had, I guess.
Another thing is, too, if we need to think about, after this building, we need to think about the cost of the maintenance, we need to have a whole time to care. That's another clause here, at a later date. Somebody's got to keep this building clean. If we go with this wood chip or whatever, wood friends, somebody's got to do with the wood, the wood chip, somebody's got to be there Saturday and Sunday, that's going to cost us money, too. Maybe we need to look at a conventional terms type thing. So we've got to think about how there's something mentioned about all these things.
Back and wrong? Yes, I think it's not as complicated as it's made out to be. Sorry, my name is Franklin, I'm living for the... So if I understand this correctly, this building is costing roughly two dollars per square foot. It's got a whole pipe here. And that is, I think, the building's cost of three hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars per square foot, regardless of the way you do it. This building is going to be twice as expensive than what you need, because you need to build it two stories. It's unfortunate that's the situation. I think the real question is, the town has already invested quite a bit in Bartel's Lodge, first acquiring it for, I don't know exactly, I believe sixty...
Sixty thousand dollars. I'm a pro of the town.
Then there was fifteen or sixty thousand dollars spent on the architect, on the highly great fence and plan, then there was forty-five thousand dollars for demolition. So we're already invested in that location. So that's of course something to, and I think that that's a problem of the select board, we already have five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in it. Question is, do we stick to that and therefore spend another five hundred thousand dollars more than we need to spend on the town office, because we want to stick to that location? I think that's the real question. And the other, the rest is sort of, as peanuts, Stephen. So my question is, I think that that's what we should put a lot more down, five hundred thousand dollars more for in the center, or five hundred thousand dollars less for
Okay, folks, everybody satisfied the questions?
When's the next meeting?
When's the next meeting for the...
They don't even know what it's going to cost.
Since they take this information back and all over, we post it as the next meeting. We don't have a future yet.
We won't warn the meeting that we have, and certainly the public, people that want to come, I mean, we'll be warning the meeting that we'll have, and certainly, the public is invited to come, because this was...
We give us...
The town office committee.
The town office committee.
Shouldn't you have a meeting here, Dave?
It wouldn't, I don't think, well, it's going to be depending on how many people respond. If we get in an R S B P kind of situation where somebody, they'll let us know how people show up. But, you know, generally, we have it at the firehouse or we have it at the town office. So we're limited to the space that we have.
Town office is awfully inadequate for forty people.
That's our point.
Yeah, I understand that point. So why wouldn't you have it here so people could talk?
Because for the last couple of years, we've only had four or five members show up to the meetings.
Well, public, we have.
Well, we haven't had public.
Yeah, we've had various, we've had nobody or maybe two or three people show up at our meetings. Public, you know, residents.
I guess a feeling here is you've spent twenty-two years and I know it's not...
I've been on this committee for twenty-two years.
Twenty-two years, it's a long, long time. The community deserves more than a short shift, one meeting, two meetings. We deserve a fair amount of hearings on this issue and not in a cricket record. We need to hear.
I totally agree. And people are more than welcome to come to meetings at a ward. We don't, we can't refuse anybody for coming to a public meeting.
I have one more question. Anybody think of dividing up this tax money into quarters or half a year? Maybe people wouldn't be so upset about spending money. When in October, you've got to come up with a whole lot of money to pay for everything. Other towns are doing it, cities are doing it.
Are you having a next meeting at the Legion?
Downstairs, that's a good idea.
That's a good idea. Let's do it.
Have it up, Legion.
Just tell me what you want. It's a great building. It's an awesome place.
Will you consider that? All right, ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you. There's one more comment before we break up for the night.
Again, this is directed to Linda. Linda, this is directed to you for many years, like twenty-five, my husband and I were on the rescue squad. Bruce Martel, Carolyn Martel, Steve Kopey, we volunteered our time, left our kids home for our older son.
I understand.
If we had more volunteers, we would not have to have that.
If you're not in town, you're dead.
Here, here.
A lot of the people, a lot of the people that are on the rescue squad have jobs.
Yeah, sure.
And they can't lose their job.
So we're telling other people to want it.
We can't. Nobody wants to volunteer. How many hours it takes to be on the rescue squad? Try it, it's a lot of hours, there are a lot of volunteering now, a lot of great things that I understand.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'll take the motion to adjourn. Second, all those in favor say aye. Thank you very much.